To get the meeting started, or City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Dave Abdullah.
Here.
Thomas Berry.
Here.
Robert Constant.
Here.
Lisa Hicks Clayton.
Here.
Margaret Horvath is absent. Joseph Kozinski.
Here.
Ray Musket.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, we have a quorum.
Thank you, and let's keep Councilwoman Horvath in our thoughts and prayers. She's recovering after some additional chemotherapy. I spoke to her today, and she would be here if she could. We'll have our Economic Development Director, Joe Hashem, lead us in the pledge.
Let's all lead it to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on our agenda is a presentation of a certificate from Michigan Municipal League for Councilwoman Lisa Hicks Clayton.
Talk about somebody's ego. I'm gonna bring my kindergarten teacher, and we'll see.
And achieving her Level Two Leadership Award from the Michigan Municipal League. Congratulations.
And may I say just a word or two?
Please.
This real brief. I want to say, and I really appreciate the opportunity as I continue education in leadership. The first level was education, the second level was leadership. I think it's really important as elected officials that we continue our education because it gives us the tools to better represent the U.S. elected officials and to serve in the capacity that we're left to do so. So again, thank you, and I appreciate this. Thank you.
And the next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kozinski.
The agenda for this day for the City Council of Dearborn Heights be approved, as submitted.
Second. Second by Councilman Abdullah. Any discussion? Hearing, none. All those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the June 13, 2017 meeting.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Clayton.
I move to approve the minutes for June 13, 2017, regular meeting at Dearborn Heights City Council, as outlined in 4A.
Is there support? Support by Councilman Kozinski? Any discussion? Hearing, none. All those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda is public comment from residents on pending agenda items, items on the agenda. Anybody have any comments on items pending on our agenda tonight? Hearing, none. The next item on the agenda, item six, fund transfers and current claims.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Berry.
Motion to approve current claim six, one through six, thirty-six.
Second. Second by Councilman Kozinski. Any discussion? Hearing, none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, item seven A, advertisement for bids for exercise equipment for the police department.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Clayton.
I move to concur with Police Chief Lee Gavin and approve the request to go out for bids for the items listed in Agenda seven A.
Second.
Second by Councilman Kozinski. Any discussion? Hearing, none. All those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, item eight A, reports from the mayor, from Mayor Palutko, extension of agreements for the Dearborn Heights Police Officers Union and the Dearborn Heights Supervisors Union.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Berry.
Both City Council concur and extend the agreements to the Dearborn Heights Police Officers Union and the Dearborn Heights Supervisors Union on a day-to-day basis until new agreement is reached and approved, as outlined in eight A.
Support. Support by Councilman Musket. Any discussion? Hearing, none. All those in favor of extending the agreements, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda, item nine A, reports from city officials, from Community and Economic Development Director, Joe Hashem, City Action Preservation Plan.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Berry.
I move City Council concur with Director Hashem and approve the establishment of the City Action Preservation Plan Program and approve the right of first refusal to obtain properties from the Wayne County Land Bank for rehabilitation and sale by the C E D D, approved contractors, under the City Action Preservation Plan Program, as outlined in nine A.
Support. Support by Councilman Musket. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
So I had a couple of, I went through the contract, and I had a couple of questions or clarifications for Joe Hashem, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Director Hashem. So Director, I had a couple of questions. On the selected firms, I just wanted to get a clarification as to the why eight, no less than eight and no more than twelve. These firms, this is on clause number five. Selected firms shall acquire a minimum of eight and up to a maximum of twelve single-family homes that will be rehabilitated, redeveloped, and sold. So I was just curious as to the thought process behind the eight and twelve.
This came about by, actually, we developed this by meeting with other economic development directors, basically downriver, Redford, La Bonia, and what have you, and they all have limitation of how many houses an individual or a company can buy. And that's basically to make sure that they can do the job well done within the timetable.
So you're making sure it's larger companies, but individual?
They don't have to be larger company, they can be investors.
Well, but I'm saying it's eight houses minimum, so obviously.
I'm saying eight houses, they gotta put $25,000 in escrow, or they have to have that money available already. They want somebody to buy these houses and get stuck and not finish them.
Not be able, yeah.
Not be able to finish their rehabs and sell them. They have to sell them to a homestead resident.
Right. And that was my next question, on the $25,000. That $25,000 was over and above the purchase price?
No, that's for.
They have that in escrow for the repairs.
Yes.
And then the purchase price would be over and above that?
Yeah, that has nothing to do with the purchase price.
Separate, okay. And then also had.
There's some typos in there, so don't mind me on that, because we have.
There's some what?
Typos.
Oh, no, no, it's okay.
We have to do this quickly, it has to go to an attorney.
Right, right, no, absolutely. So on clause number eight, you had on there, there was a sixty-day clause, which is a third one coming down. Remaining unsold rehabilitated properties are eligible for land contract terms only within sixty days from the end date of this contract. So I just wanted to get that clarified, I just wanted to get a clarification on that. You're talking about, they could not sell it cash, then they could sell it land contract?
No, no, they can sell it cash, they can sell it.
Or mortgage, I'm saying.
For a mortgage, regular mortgage. In case they get stuck with these houses and nobody has the ability to buy them, then they can write a land contract that will be equitable to what the bank would give them.
Right.
If the interest rate is around five, let's say five percent, they can charge you ten percent and just gouge the people.
So my main question to you was, so hypothetically, a company rehabs eight, nine, ten, twelve, whatever houses, and they want to sell them on land contract right off the bat, would that be allowed, or that would not be allowed?
No, they have to go through the procedure first. They have to basically.
Try to sell them on mortgage.
Mark them out, and we do have a very long spreadsheet that we keep track of every house and what happens to it.
Right, but I'm just wondering, why can't they sell it land contract right off the bat?
I think that's just from the wisdom of other economic developments that they have gone through this program, this is my first year going through it.
Sure.
They have gone through it for the last ten, fifteen years, and they've seen ups and downs, and basically they said, you know, you're more likely to hold on to a house if you have a mortgage than if you have a land contract. I mean, that's even from my banking background. If you have a mortgage, you're more likely to hold on to your house and make your payments on time. A land contract, you can always walk away from it with kind of a little bit of lesser factor, lesser.
Okay. And then on clause number nine, under the recapture provision, going through there, if, well, let me read. An event, a firm does not meet the required deadlines or other contract provisions without express written approval from community development staff, the acquired properties will be transferred back to Redford Township.
That's a typo, that's, we have to copy and paste.
Okay, so it's not Redford?
No, it has nothing to do with that.
Okay. I was trying to clarify why Redford.
No, no, and there's one at the very, and also it says township should be city, so I apologize for that.
Okay, no, I was trying to clarify why Redford.
I wanted to rush this through.
No, that's fine, as long as it's a typo, that's fine.
Eventually, it has to go to an attorney for him to give us his advice and put some legal language in there as well.
Right. And I tell you, everything I've heard about these types of projects is a good thing for the city, because you're getting companies that are coming in here.
That's what I.
Rehabbing these homes.
Thank you.
They typically, in general, do a very good job of it, and the fact that you're putting conditions that it has to be owner occupied, obviously, just is even another shot in the arm for the city, so it's good stuff. Thank you.
So, Mr. Chair, should we include in here, refer to, for referral to the attorney?
I don't think, I think Harry will review this. I'm not sure of Gary Wood.
I've previously looked at something similar. I have serious reservations regarding these types of programs, which I believe I.
Well, we, I know you have serious reservations, but we sort of want to move forward with it, but we'd like to look at the language on it.
Sure, twice, I mean, you don't have to.
That's right.
Follow my advice.
Yeah, it's our choice.
Exactly, so.
And Mayor, does Harry Calagueras, does he do, is there someone different that reviews our C D B G stuff?
No, Harry does. Harry.
Harry?
Right.
So would it go to him, or would it go to our corporate counsel?
Well, I would want to get Gary's input for the simple reason that when you make your decision, and whether you wish to follow his advice or not, I think you should get his points, although I think I have his points from last time, so I guess we're gonna probably have two attorneys looking at it.
Yeah. Mr. Chair. Councilman. So. Well, I'd have to change the motion to refer it back to corporate counsel for review and approval upon review.
Well, how much time do we have? We've got to be off.
Three days. No, joking.
No, I'm just wondering, because, I mean, if it's going to happen regardless of what my advice would be, and I did have very serious reservations regarding these programs, I mean, I can look at it in terms of form and just basically send everyone an email with regards to my concerns.
Well, Mr. Chair. Go ahead. And I apologize, Mr. Counsel. I understand the concerns, I know that I've gone down this road with counsel before, and I know that the programs we had in the past, we've learned a lot from them. I still think that there are opportunities out here to help ourselves, and I think we have somebody in place now that can grab this, wrap his arms around this, and make this work.
Well, one of the things that's helpful is having three people instead of one who ends up basically getting a, an exclusive right to end up dealing. I mean, it's.
Well, that's going to be based on a number of homes, too, that are available, so we don't know today if there are eight homes or if there's 200 homes, so there may come up with only five.
Right, and some of it's going to be a matter of which homes, because a lot of times what they do is they want to cherry pick the homes that they can, and then we have a potential problem because the county will end up saying that we're using this as a process to end up avoiding our responsibilities to give them money back through the revolving fund. And they know that argument, so that's my concern with regard to these, that essentially the county knows that these things are happening, they have them in Allen Park, they have them in Taylor.
Yes.
You call it a neighborhood restabilization program, if you want, but I mean, really, that's what we want to do, rather than, you know.
Well, you know, I can just point out my concerns, but I'll put together an appropriate agreement, probably use the Redford Township one as a model, if we can get a word version of it.
I met with Mike Dennis, and Mike Dennis, and I talked to him like for a long time about this project, and he has, he has had a lot of success with this particular project, and they do cherry pick, so I apologize for that, they do pick some houses and leave others, but at the beginning, keep in mind that all of these houses are going to win County Land Bank anyway, regardless.
So they're going to go to someone.
So if you pick ten houses out of thirty.
No, it's, even though they'll go to the land bank, then the county's issue is potentially, we sell it for something less than fair market value by virtue of a quitclaim deed to these contractors who have an exclusive right of dealing, and then essentially what they end up doing is they turn around and sell it for significantly more than fair market value. If we did that, the additional value beyond the amount of taxes and everything would have to be paid back over to the county. What they do then is essentially make a profit on the difference between how much we have to pay for the tax foreclosed property through the tax foreclosure process and what would ordinarily be our share to send back over to the county. And the other thing that I'm interested in is, what do we do with places that are already occupied? And do we end up getting ourselves into a position with regard to tenants who are left over in the property under those circumstances, and whether or not we have a process in place with regard to that? Taylor devolved some pretty sophisticated procedures with regard to that, but it made it almost sound even more kind of like, especially with an exclusive dealing sort of situation, more problematic.
You're talking about the holdover owners? Go ahead.
The holdover owners who basically have lost due to the tax foreclosure sale and now are potentially staying in the premises with the idea that they need to be evicted, and then we're in a position where we're turning over the property to someone else. If indeed that's the case, then maybe we need to end up having these people also assume the responsibility to end up evicting these individuals with regard to that.
Your comment regarding these properties going back to the land bank, the land bank does not have any stipulation in it that requires those properties, once they're sold, to become, to become homestead. Or occupied?
Right.
Correct, but in this program here, we are requiring homestead in it, so that's why I think there's a greater value to us controlling our destiny rather than them.
I'm sorry, and they did that in Taylor, and then after they did it, they rushed it through, and then they came back and got an addendum to changes so that they could end up making them into rental properties.
Well.
And that's, you know, that's part of the difficulties, I don't know that the economics, but, you know, I've.
I respect that.
I've previously said, but it's the council, the mayor's decision with regard to that, and I will make it work the best I can.
Thank you.
But make sure I air my concerns to you, to yourselves.
I amended my motion to refer this to counsel for review and approval upon his review.
Well, just say, have me approve the document as opposed to approve it in general, since you're approving this in general.
So move. Okay, Councilman Abdullah.
So I had, I had a couple of questions, if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
Okay. So the first things first, is the corporate counsel mentioned they had some reservations, and I, for one, would like to hear what those reservations are, if you don't mind.
Yeah, I prepared a rather lengthy, Chrissy, I think I sent it over to, there are, I mean, part of the concerns are that if I say them, in a public forum, someone could turn around and end up.
All right, can you email them to us?
Yeah, we, let's get the document to you with his.
Okay, because I'd like, I, for one, would like to read it, that's one. Two, we had, there was a situation that was all over Westland, I believe it was the city of Westland that had a situation, similar situation with this, with the eviction process as far as getting people out and people losing their properties to a tax foreclosure, and then I know there was some class action suits, if I'm not mistaken, against the city, so in your provisions, I would want, I would prefer something in there to protect us as a city, and then, of course, respect the residents' situation, too. I mean, we don't want to throw residents out either. That's, obviously, it's got to be worked out, but just keep the Westland situation in mind. I know it was all over the news, and there was some.
It didn't go anywhere.
And it didn't go anywhere, but nevertheless, we should address those particular situations. I don't remember the details of it, but it was pretty.
Was it Garden City?
It was Garden City.
Was it Garden City? Maybe it was Garden City, yeah, I think it was Garden City that you mentioned it.
Yeah.
It was all over the news, it was last winter sometime. And then the third issue, you mentioned in there the, not you mentioned, I'm sorry, it's mentioned in there, that they cannot rent it out, and to me, if that's the case, then there should be a provision in there, some sort of a deed restriction, because if, like, let's say I'm just throwing it out there, John Doe purchases the property and then quitclaim deeds it back to a totally different person, you know, X, Y, Z, or, you know, person X, Y, Z, that that person, that person's not bound by the same contract.
No.
Right.
And I did talk to other economic developments about that, and they said that does happen occasionally, however, I will take the council's advice on this and maybe put some provision in there.
I don't know if you could put that.
But if it does happen, it does, there's certain things you can control.
Well, you can, no, you can't, you can't put it in a deed, because you could put a deed restriction on anything that you sell, as long as you don't discriminate. I think the last time we did it, we required that it be held for two years.
Yeah, no deed transfers for two years.
What's a year and a half here?
For so many years.
Yeah, no deed transfers for two years, or a year and a half, or whatever.
Oh, after they sell it?
No, no, once the property's purchased, okay, so it's purchased by X, Y, Z Corp, to rehab eight houses, based on the fact that we have a provision in here, or at least a proposal in here, that they cannot rent it, what I am saying is, it'd be very easy for company X, Y, Z to purchase it, close the deal, rehab the home, and then sell it to Joe Kozinski, not you, but just in general, I mean, or quitclaim deed it to Joe Kozinski, which is what their intention was along, along, and then he could rent it out now at that particular point, and there's nothing to stop him from doing that, unless we had a deed restriction where there could be no deed transfers for a certain amount of time.
And I believe that it's in there already that we do have a lien.
It is not an arms-length transaction.
There's a lien, we have, the city of Dearborn Heights has a lien on those properties, therefore, you can sell it, we're still in first position.
Yeah, but would that, would that, would that become, that would now become not an arms-length transaction, am I correct in saying that?
Well, a lot of times, I mean, I'm talking with people.
Yeah, and I know. From day one, they have it set up. You're going to give me, I'm going to buy it from you on the land contract, and we're really partners, and I'm just going to rent it out.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
We'll find out what others.
If it's that important.
I'd like to get, you know, Councilman Maitiki's opinion on this, maybe help me put some more meat into this as far as conditions and stipulation.
Protection language or something like that.
Sure, I'll try to do what I can in the time.
And lastly, in terms of, you mentioned them cherry picking. Banks do that all the time, where they sell property, so, you know, Bank ABC has, you know, twenty foreclosures, they'll sell them to investors as a bundle, and you take the whole cart, everything, the good, the bad, and the ugly. So that's another option.
Yeah.
They have somebody acquiring them as a bundle, which, they're getting the good ones, but they're going to also take the bad ones with it.
That's a good idea. So we'll check. All right, any further discussion?
Isn't this the issue that requires owner occupancy?
That's what we were talking.
That's what we were discussing.
Yeah.
If an owner comes in and occupies, how would he, how would he have the privilege of renting, and would there then be a requirement for a deed restriction? And you're talking about a limited deed restriction for a short period of time.
Whatever time.
It must be owner occupied for two years, or something like that. We'll find out what other cities do, what other.
Well, other cities, once the house is sold to a third party, an independent third party, then that's when they lose track of the situation, to be honest with you. You can only carry this for so long and control it for so long, and, and I agree with the council, Councilman Maitiki. The six months rehab, and then you have a year to sell this to a homestead, and then after you sell that house, you have no control, just like if you were to went to Wayne County, for example, you really don't have any control after that.
Unless we consider a required two-year homestead on it.
Pardon?
Unless we required a two-year homestead on it, like we did in the past.
Two-year owner occupied.
Two-year owner occupied.
And we can probably do that, but that might scare some people off who are buying these houses, but I'm not sure, I mean, that's something that I'll throw back and take advice from you.
Maybe we could see what other cities do. Go ahead, Corporation Counsel.
Looking at the lies when we would end up having to have this set and ready, I would assume, so we're kind of in a tight timeframe to be able to look at this at the very end.
Well, maybe for future, for future.
Well, I want to, personally, I want to know what our timeframe is, because that means I might have to meet with Mr. Hashem, and I'm not sure when.
May I suggest, may I suggest, maybe if you were to review this and get the language straight, and if there were any, if there were any amendments to it, we could bring amendments back and include them as we move forward?
Well, we could have the request for proposals and then basically end up having like a formed contract in place, and then the council could end up selecting individuals who'd end up basically having the contract. I mean, that would be my sense of what should be done, and then it would, could be three different firms to be able to end up doing this. That at least would avoid some of the difficulties that I have in these situations.
What is a county's dead, well, July, isn't it?
My first is when the list comes out, and.
July 1st is when the list comes out.
We have to, we have to end up doing something within, and I forgot the number of days, is John here?
Nope.
I want to say fifteen.
It's relatively short.
Yeah.
It's like ten days or something along those lines, and the city has to end up saying, okay, we want these properties, and ordinarily, what you're looking at in these situations is what happens, is the contractor basically says, these are the, say, fifteen properties that we're interested in, if the state does not end up using its first writ of refusal, which it almost never does, then it goes to us, we basically say to the county, these are the fifteen properties that we want, we paid the minimum bid, and then we go from there through the whole process. I don't know if there's anything in here, and I haven't looked at it, I'm sorry, that says anything about the firm having to have sufficient.
Yes, they do. They have to show us either a line of credit from a rapid roll bank, obviously, or they have to put escrow money in the bank, and they have to pay us back within five days so the city's not out of the money.
Right.
The money is coming from the investor or the contractor.
Okay.
It's in there, but it's.
Yeah, and that would be something that we would need to look at, but, you know, we're looking at a tight timeframe.
Any further discussion?
No.
All right, and would there was support from Councilman Kozinski, or there was no support? I amended my original motion, and I needed a second.
Support, support.
So there's a support there. Support of Councilman, uh, Kluft Brusavich.
Can you give us the motion, because it sounded like it was approved subject to council approval?
Yeah, you want to restate the motion?
So.
So I move City Council approved, no, approve the contract between, yeah, no, so I move City Council approve the establishment of the City Action Preservation Plan Program and approve the right of first refusal to obtain properties from Wayne County Land Bank for rehabilitation and sale by C E D D approval contractors under the City Action Preservation Plan Program as outlined in nine A, and refer this back to counsel, corporate counsel for language review and approval.
Support.
Support by Councilman Abdullah. Any further discussion? Did you get all that, Mr. Kirk? I'm sorry.
Would that include?
No, that was basically the last paragraph, just how they had it listed.
Would that involve the contract as well? Any of the contracts for the three contractors? Just because our timeframes are such, I mean, I'm not sure we can do the RFP, get the thing, and then.
I'm not going to get that back by July 1st.
Yeah.
How can we approve it and then add stipulations for later?
Amend it? You can always amend. To be reviewed by Corporation Counsel, you said referred back, but you haven't
To be reviewed by Corporation Council, you said refer back, but you haven't seen it yet, so to refer to Corporation Council.
How can we approve this the way it sits?
Well, he's gonna, he's going to review it. He's gonna review it, and it's, it's a language is what it is. So take out the, um.
Okay.
Take out the typos, clarification, they're gonna have to create a contract.
Any further, I'm sorry, Mr. Kirk, do you want that one more time or no?
No, Mr. Chairman, we're good.
Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you. The next item on the agenda, item 9B, from Recreation Director Ken Gribel. Parkland Park Tennis Court Restoration Project Contractors Contract.
Don't know speak at once. I don't know how to do this.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
It's right there, it says approve the contract between.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Clayton.
Move to approve the contract provided in 9B. This is for the tennis courts at Parkland Park. Total amount is $15,985. The contract is attached as outlined in 9B.
You've authorized the Mayor and City Clerk to sign the agreement on behalf of the city.
That, yes, that is in the language, yes.
Support by Councilman Musket. Any discussion? Glad you caught that at page four. Any, any discussion?
It's on here.
Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, item 9C, from Comptroller John Lob, Budget Amendments.
Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Councilman Kaczynski.
I move council concur with request of Comptroller Lob and approve the budgetary amendments listed in 9C to conform to the actual expenses for year-end purposes.
Support.
Support by Councilwoman Clayton. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, item 9B, from Administrative Assistant Christine Laslow. Purchase Agreement for Eight Hanover Properties Under the Hazard Mediation Grant.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kaczynski.
I move council concur with the mayor and with the support of Christine Laslow and approve all of the contracts as indicated in 9D numbering eight. These agreements are signed by the mayor and the clerk for appropriate signatures, all per 9D.
Support.
Support by Councilman Barry. Any discussion?
Uh, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Abdallah.
Christina, all the appraisals are in, right? Okay, thank you.
Can you amend your motion here? Where we're after John Larry.
Twenty-five hundred.
Yeah.
It's similar, similar to the last closings that we had, where we had the closing costs not to exceed 2,500. Anything below, they're authorized to move forward with. Anything above, we have to approve.
Is it, is it in here?
It's in the back page.
He said outlined in 9D, so he covered it. I understand exactly what you're saying.
Yes, sir, there's a limitation of $2,500 for closing costs. That, that's a part of 9D.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of concurring with Administrative Assistant Christine Laslow?
I'm sorry, I have to interrupt, I'm sorry.
Go right ahead.
Christina, there's no, are these the final homes? Is it done now, over with, no additional homes left? 'Cause they're all the same streets, it gets a little confusing what's left and what's not.
These are the final of the primary homes. We have alternate homes, and with the prices coming in and the cost of the grant, the demolitions have come in less. We do have a little bit money, once I get state approval from the grant, to go to the alternates then, which are across telegraph, on west telegraph.
Okay, so that's, but that's a whole different phase. But for the ones on Hanover, would this would finalize everything?
This would finalize that block if everybody accepts. They still have an opportunity to accept or reject, but yes.
Right, right. Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of concurring with Administrative Assistant Christine Laslow regarding the purchase agreement for the eight Hanover properties under the Hazard Mediation Grant, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, from Police Chief Lee Gavin, repairs to the HVAC system at the Justice Center.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kaczynski.
I move council concur with Police Chief Gav, uh, Gavin regarding the payment for the expenses of repair of the HVA system in the criminal justice, uh, complex. The expenses in total cost are $4,525 and should be divided as indicated in item 9D dated June 12, 2017.
Support.
Support by Councilman Abdallah. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of concurring with Police Chief Lee Gavin regarding the repairs to the HVA system at the Justice Center, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, also from Chief Gavin, purchase of four Canon cameras and four Pro Master speedlights for Canon. Councilman Musket.
I, I move that council approve the purchase and payment for four Canon cameras, four Pro Masters speedlight for Canon. Total cost $3,592 and will be purchased from the Pro Cam photo and video gear. The money will come out of the Police Department Repair and Maintenance Count as outlined in 9F.
Support.
Support by Councilwoman Clayton. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Barry.
This hasn't, this doesn't have anything to do with this electronics here, but Ms. Laslow, I, I, we have a copier, I think, in your office, still under wrap. Who is that for? I should've called you and asked you. I forgot about it until I saw this.
We still have two copiers under wrap, one in my office and one in HR. We're waiting on the phone system. The one I have is the comptroller's office and HR's, HR. The, um, the other copiers have since died, and we've gone to put them in, but they don't have the fax capabilities. So, as long as they're working, those offices kinda need their faxes, so.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of concurring with Chief Gavin regarding the purchase of the Canon cameras and speedlights for Canon cameras, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next item on the agenda, item 11A, from Corporation Council Gary Miyatki. Second reading of proposed ordinance H-17-03.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kaczynski.
Move council concur with a request to have the ordinance H-1703 read for the second time and become effective upon appropriate publication.
Support.
Support by Councilman Barry. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilor Miyatki.
Note that this version is just slightly different based on discussions. It says that the employee must file with the city honor before June 29, 2017, at 5:00 PM in election to retire from employment with the city, which was consistent with the discussions the last time. Other than that, it's the same exact ordinance.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
No by Councilman Musket, and five yeses. The next item on the agenda, communications from, uh, uh, City Clerk Walter Prasevich. Great Lakes Water Authority Rates Regarding Fiscal Year 2018 Schedule of Charges for Wholesale Water and Sewage. Councilman Barry.
I believe this is a received note and file.
Correct.
Move City Council receive note and file Agenda Item 12A from the Great Lakes Water Authority regarding the 2018 wholesale water schedule charges, of charges as outlined in 12A.
Second. Second by Councilman Kaczynski. Any discussion? Thank the clerk for calling to this, to my attention, and we've got it on the agenda. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I think it's notable that the original budget projection for this increase was a 4% increase, and it settled down to 2%, maybe an indication of this new arrangement with the GLA, this Great Lakes Water Authority. Hopefully, there'll be further reductions in across, all of the expenses across the board for water, in spite of it being a bargain at this, at this rate.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of receiving note and filing the rate schedule, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it.
I think officially you were receiving noting and filing, you were not approving it, but that's.
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought that's what he said.
Yeah, we received note and file.
Received note and file.
That was a motion.
All those in favor, just aye, yeah.
The next item on the agenda, under New Business, Item 13A, Business License Renewals for High Grade Steakhouse and Warren Valley Golf and Banquet Center.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kaczynski.
Move that the council approves the renewal of licensing as indicated in item 13A.
Support.
Support by Councilman Barry. Uh, any discussion, Councilman Abdallah?
Yeah.
Councilman Barry.
Yeah, I, I've got a problem with supporting this, because when we look at, I mean, for high grades, that's fine, everything looks good, everything is on time. But for the Warren Valley, there's a problem here, and there's a recurring problem. I don't know why, where, who, but.
We are.
They've owned, I know we're in the process of possibly purchasing it, and I know we're doing the due diligence, but they've owned since September of last year, their bill's been between the low of 15,000 to 16,000, and then the high of 24,000. And so I got, I got a problem with approving.
Mr. Chair.
Their relicensing when they owe that big of an amount, and when, and when the amount could be paid by, by the, I think it's the county that would pay that, is that correct? I know there's an agreement, but for $500, but that, to me, that's not.
I think what we, what we discussed at a previous meeting was, um, whatever the cost is that they are behind, we will, we will deduct that from the payment to them for that, of course.
That's in the agreement in purchasing.
Yeah, correct. But at the same time, the purchase of Warren Valley is still not set in stone, because we're still doing our due diligence. So there is a possibility hypothetically, four, five, six months later, we don't purchase this. And meanwhile, even without this Warren Valley situation right now, purchasing it, this has been going on since last year. And if I'm not mistaken, it's the county that pays this, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, so to me, we put them under the gun, we say, we're not renewing your license until you pay your seven. They owe now 14,508. I, 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 I mean, here's my theory about this. If this was John Doe, restaurant owner, we would not renew it for them. So there should be no difference, in my, in my opinion.
So, let me ask you. I understand your position, and to be quite honest with you, I support it. So, let's play this out. Let's not renew their license. What happens?
At that point, the county pays it.
County's not paying you right now, what do you mean?
Okay, well, then we force their hand. I mean, to me, that's.
But have, but complete the process, excuse me, repeat, complete the process right now, so you force their hand. You approach the county and you tell them that if you don't pay this bill, we're shutting you down.
Would I renew their license? That's what I would do.
Well, I know that's the way we do, but wait, do we have the mechanism to do that?
Not shut them down, we're just not gonna renew their license.
So that doesn't prevent them from operating?
Well, then they're operating illegally. Then at that particular point, council would have to determine what the next step is from a legal standpoint.
Two, two questions, Mayor. So, number one, do we know is there a management company that's responsible, at least submitting the bill, that's running the banquet facility?
Bill is made out to Wayne County, it's Wayne County's obligation.
And then, secondly, we have other mechanisms in place to, for, for close and unpaid water bills. One being not renewing their business license, but we have other, buying a lien and so forth?
The, the strongest power that we have in regards to delinquent water or sewage bills is the fact that it becomes a lien on the property. The difficulty with a, that, and the fact that there's no property tax paid on this particular site is that's not a collectible way of enforcement on a water or sewage bill like it is on a business or on a residential.
But if, if the city or anyone else buys this property, it'll be, that'll be deducted, you know, at the, at.
Time of sale.
The buyer will pay that much less.
Yeah, it has to be paid. No, the seller.
Will deduct it from the seller, will deduct it from the purchase price.
Yes, it's in the purchase agreement that it says at closing, if there are any sort of utility bills, which includes water, that have not been paid, then they must be deducted from the purchase.
But I'm curious, what is their thought process as to, you know, since September of last year, they've not paid this crazy amount that any resident would have to pay, any business owner would have to pay? Well, I mean, I'm sure they've got 15,000.
There is, there is a significant problem, in, in my opinion, in the accounting department at the county. We are somewhere around, correct me if I'm wrong, John, 700,000 we owe them on CSO basin fees. We have not been billed. We know that at some point we're gonna get billed, but who would run a business that you had $700,000 of a collectible, and that affects our water and sewer budget, and I'm not, we're not gonna pay until we get a bill, and we haven't received a bill. And, and at one point, that amount was close to a million and a half. And then, and then they got a call, and they said, you haven't paid us. And we said, we haven't seen a bill. So then they got us a bill, and we paid it. I mean, we have the money, it's escrow, we know we owe that money, but I'm telling you that, I know.
Well, if I, if I may, we, we owe that subject to our legal arguments against them with respect to the transfer of the CSO basin. But, I mean, the, the difficulty in this situation is that you raise this issue in this fashion, we potentially are going to be raising, you know, whatever it is here, 14,000 or something, as opposed to 700,000. So, especially since we're, you know, working through this agreement, my tendency would be to say, leave it alone, at least for the time being, given the fact that if, if they really wanted to make more of a stink about things, they could end up saying, well, you owe us 700,000. Even though, again, we feel that our legal position is correct, but it is one where, uh, where the only way it would end up being appropriately resolved would be court, and we're trying to avoid that.
And is, is the, somebody operating the banquet hall now? So if we don't renew the business license, they have to close, we're, and if we're buying it, it's that much.
It might be difficult for us in terms of.
But the bill is to Wayne County, not to that.
Right, right, right.
Mr. Chairman.
Kaczynski.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, the, this might not be an expense related specifically to the banquet hall. You gotta do some watering on the greens out there that.
Right, right.
And it, it's not appropriate to criticize ourselves. We are county. We somehow got leadership that don't even pay attention to the bills that are coming in, or don't even send them out when they should be sent out. So, let it be as it is, let's, let's string them along until we can get to a point where we're in control, and then we'll.
But we have since September.
Yep.
Of last year.
And, and before that.
Yeah.
If you ask Councilwoman Horvath, when she gets back, you can, she'll tell you how many times she's on the phone with them in, in past history about, hey, let's get these water bills paid, 'cause everybody is taking advantage of us, particularly in the county, and, and they don't pay us for that kind of service. Give us a percent or two.
Our county commissioner, our county commissioner does help us in this.
Oh, yes, no, there's no question.
Commissioner Webb.
This is not a reflection of Diane Webb.
Yeah, she helps us, she really does.
Internal issues.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Musket.
Maybe I missed it along the line, but what would happen to this $14,500 if we don't buy the golf course?
We can foreclose, if the county were to keep it operating, or somebody else buys it, they have to pay it.
No, he, the, the mechanism we use is, uh, we'll go to our Wayne County Commissioner, and we ask her to intercede, and she does, and we get a check. And that unfortunately has been how the process has been working the last few years. And that's what we will do. I'm, I'm kind of agreeing with Councilman Abdallah, but I see the urgency in getting this done here.
Well, just the same, you know, it's all about relationships, unfortunately, when it comes to the county. So, we need to maintain those relationships. We can sit here and criticize their accounting all we want, and as long as we have a mechanism in place that makes this work without ruffling too many feathers and making our, our lives miserable here, our residents.
I have to agree with you.
We use our diplomacy at the maximum that we can.
We might be shooting ourselves in the foot a little bit as far as wrapping up the deal, if the sale, if we do buy it.
And some other things that we are dealing with among.
There's a multitude of, I don't know what you'd say, disagreements.
How was the issue, like, for example, I remember years ago with the library and payments for the library and the.
Yeah, we've got, we've got a number of issues that are very significant dollar items that generally have to do with like water and sewer and those types of issues that, um, I think we have to be careful about, or that would be my recommendation. I understand the, the difficulties and the frustration, but at least for what it's worth, that would be my suggestion.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of renewing the business license for High Grade Steakhouse and Warren Valley Golf and Banquet Center, please say aye.
Aye.
No.
Those opposed?
No.
That was five yeses and one no. That ends the regular business portion of our meeting. Any announcements from anybody at the table? Any announcements?
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Musket.
All I know is Fourth of July season again, and here we go with the fireworks. They seem to start two weeks before the Fourth of July and go to, sometimes three weeks after the Fourth of July. I wish people would understand that you can't do this, the day of, the day before, the day of, and the day after. I don't know, I'm not a policeman. Don't pretend to be, don't pretend to know what they go through. I just wish we could do a little bit more somewhere along the line. If, if we increase the patrols, when people call, we get better response time on it. I urge people, they can't say, well, somebody down the street is doing it. You gotta give an address, because a policeman is not gonna go driving down, up and down every street in a subdivision looking for it. You gotta give an address, and hopefully the police department can work out a situation where they, they can get more patrols on the road for these fireworks that are being done illegally at the time. I guess that's all I have to say. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, I'd like to make a quick comment on a, on a very important issue. We are in the process of hiring full-time dispatchers and are advertising the position, as we do for all full-time positions. I received an email over the weekend, and was very troubled by what I subsequently found on social media. Some people have decided to claim that these are temporary positions only, and not to bother filing, filling out an application for the position. Apparently, these are the same people that convinced a few dispatchers last year to quit their jobs. I would hope that nobody is deterred by these comments, but knowing that this is all politically driven to the detriment of the city, I feel that I have to make the public aware that we are hiring full-time dispatchers, and we have no intentions of terminating them at any time. I also want to say, if you're looking for a position, and this is a very challenging position, and, and you have an interest to even consider this, please call or visit our human resource department. We need dispatchers. We have approximately six or seven openings at the moment.
Thank you. Anyone else? Again, want to have everyone remember Councilwoman Horvath. Remember her and your thoughts and prayers as she goes through some health ordeal. Wish those who observed Ramadan happy and blessed Eid, and hope they had a reflective and pleasant Ramadan, and spend some time with family, the Eid holiday. Regarding the medical marijuana ordinance, the mayor had, the mayor and our city attorney had been working on updates to our medical marijuana ordinances, and I had brought it up also. And there was a proposal or a, a sample ordinance that was given to us, we had some good discussion. I don't want anybody to think that we've made up our mind, we, everybody understands that at the state level, that's where it's decided whether someone can use medical marijuana and to what extent. Far from a zoning standpoint, that's something that the city has to look at as a new use. I know I haven't made up my mind, so I'd like to hear what, what members of the public think. You can email me via the clerk's office, or contact any of us, but it's something we're considering and studying.
Mr. Chairman?
Councilman, Corporation Council, Meatkey.
Yes, Mr. Roberts had ended up sending an email, trying to clarify what the twelve fifteen, namely the December fifteenth timeline is. It's not a end date, it's the first date that licenses will end up being given. So instead of, so you have more time.
So it's not a deadline for...
Exactly.
...a decision.
So just to, just to clarify that, I think everyone was kind of feeling like there was a real rush, and you really do have some more time with regard to that issue.
And also, I don't know if it was yesterday or today, there was an article in one of the major Detroit dailies, and apparently, the first commission meeting happened. And so they didn't offer any rulings. In fact, they said, "We have a lot of work to do, and we'll be informing the public later in the year."
Yeah, so there's, it's, it's a newer issue, and there's a lot to be understood about it, and a lot to be studied. Thank you, Corporation Council, for that update. Any other announcements?
Hello, Council Chair and Mayor. I just want to talk about a couple of upcoming events at the library. First off, this Friday, June thirtieth, at Carolyn Candy Library at 1:00 p.m., and Saturday, July first, at JFK Library at 1:00 p.m., we will be having our summer reading program kickoff parties. This year's theme, Build a Better World, will be celebrated with games, treats, and crafts. Everyone can register and learn how to earn rewards for all the reading I am sure you will all do throughout the summer. So come on out and enjoy a season of literacy and laughter. Also, next Friday, July seventh, at 1:00 p.m. at JFK Library, we will be having a Lego party. Children ages four to seventeen are invited to build with Legos, Lincoln Logs, and Connex. Any donations of building materials are also appreciated. That's all for now, but a lot more to come this summer, so thank you for your time, and see you at the library.
Thank you.
Could you give that Lego? I've got a couple of family members that are...
Oh, all right.
They might find it...
Yeah, that's Friday, July seventh, at 1:00 p.m.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other announcements? Recreation Director Kenneth P. Grebel, why don't you get up and go ahead?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. June seventh through the eleventh, the city celebrated their thirty-fifth annual Spirit Festival, and I'd like to give a, a report on it. The numbers are good, weather was, was extremely good to us, and the crowds were record crowds this year. We had the largest Wednesday ever attended at the festival, and then Saturday outdid last year's biggest Saturday. So now we have a new record day, and overall, this was the highest-attended festival to date. So we're still, we're still growing. The one thing that we had changed in our advertising is that we went to Facebook for the first time. We went social media, and we hit it pretty hard, and I think we were able to get to some other people that maybe did not know about our event, or didn't know as much about it, because we were able then to advertise our individual entertainment acts, and our, Carnival Midway, and all the, all the other features of the festival. Evidently, it worked, it was appealing, and, and the numbers show. Our profit for this year was nine thousand, three hundred ninety-seven dollars and seventy-five cents. And we are probably one of the few festivals that do cover all their costs or even go beyond. And so we're very proud of that, that fact. You know, this couldn't be done without a tremendous team effort, and I know we always hear that word, "team," but if you don't have a team working, and in Dearborn Heights, I, I mentioned this before, we have a tremendous team, and it starts with the mayor, city council, and all the elect officials, and everybody sitting at this table, that give their support and help on the event. But the individual departments that really help out, and the first I'd like to mention is our Building and Maintenance Department. They're the ones that do all the setup, and they have to do all the, I hate to say, the dirty details that, that maybe go unnoticed, but if they aren't done, they're noticed. And they do a tremendous job, and they stay up on things, and, and Mike Blackburn, who heads that department, did a great job. DPW gets all their signs up. HR, you probably say, "How does HR involve?" Well, we have to hire a lot of people for our parking, just for that weekend, and so they work with us in getting those people through and processed in time, and, and so that we can get them aboard, and then for a smooth transition. Controller's Office, you know, getting all the checks out that we have to get, and all the requests we have for all the people that have to be paid. Bob Amcraft for doing, coordinating the TV show with the mayor that we did, which is very helpful, and then doing some other advertising for us, thank you very much. Our police department, who I had mentioned before, very proactive, and that's why I think we're so successful in not having a major incident at our event, is our police don't wait for things to happen, then react. They're proactive in noticing things, and then trying to be ahead of it versus, you know, going from behind. And then our firemen, the union, I have great accolades for them, we probably have the finest first aid. They, they volunteer, all the, all the men in the, in the fire department volunteer their time, and we have a around-the-clock first aid station that will attend anybody's needs. I'm happy to announce that there weren't any major incidences, there might have been a little bit of heat stroke, there may have been an abrasion here or there, but overall, unfortunately, they're like the Maytag Man, they were a little bit lonely over there at times. But it was great PR, because I know they were getting pictures taken with little kids and things like that, so it's, it's just another great feature of our festival. And all, all the volunteers that, that helped out, and if I missed anybody, I do apologize.
Jared Willem's?
Yeah, I was going to get to that last. I was going to get last. And last but not least, I just want to make sure on all the city departments, and cable, and everybody, you know, you're seeing the type of team that comes together, and really makes my job as chairman very, very easy in, in pulling this event off each year. And then last but not least, I'd like to mention is my, my committee, who I work very closely with, and the first person, of course, I'd like to mention, is Jerry Willem's. He's the only other charter member of this group other than myself who have been here for the all three, one of the festivals. My wife Peggy, who took care of the Taste of the Heights. Kim Constant, Deputy Director, takes care of the food areas, and the ice, and all the other little details that need to be done. Mike Henninger took care of the parking, all those parking issues, and getting the staff to coordinate all the parking lots that we have to, you know, maintain and supervise. And Marty O'Sullivan, who's the chairman of the Parks and Recreation Commission, takes care of the adult beverage area with the other recreation commissioners. So that, that's kind of our whole team, and you can see, it, it takes quite a few people to pull this off, and, once again, I, I think a tremendous success that we all, as a community, can be very proud of. Thank you.
Great, great, thank you.
Nice job, Ken.
Nice job. Thank you. Any other announcements? Steve? Steve Roberts?
Go ahead, Steve. I'll go after Steve. He's older than I am.
Okay, you say so. Steve Roberts of the Watershed Committee. This Thursday, we are tending to our three rain gardens. If anybody wants to learn how to cover up weeds, the environmental way of covering all the weeds, we will be doing it in two of the rain gardens. One of the rain gardens, we are going to be planting and weeding in number one. I would like to have some help from any adults that know gardening, and anybody who wants to learn how to do the correct way of environmentally safe way of killing weeds. And anybody who has any gas or power, electric-powered weed whackers, please come and help us weed whack the areas we have to. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
This is at nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock, Richard A. Young Center, fifty-four hundred McKinley, correct?
Right.
And nine a.m.?
Nine a.m.
All right, thank you.
We'll have some honor society students there, and...
We're hoping to have students. We haven't had any feedback from them yet.
They're probably...
Usually, we do.
They scatter, yeah.
But we are going to try to do it environmentally safe.
And you can use the gas-powered equipment, too?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our City Clerk, Walter Prushevitz?
Just an update on the election. By the time we meet again here at the council, the absentee ballots will have been sent out. We have received partial delivery of some of our new equipment. We're still awaiting other pieces. You can get an absentee ballot all the way up to Saturday before the election, so if you need one, seven nine one, thirty-four, thirty-two. We could still use a couple of election workers, if you know anybody who's interested. You can send them my way. And finally, I just, I want to make mention of one thing. With this new equipment, we have new handicap assist equipment, which consists of a computer monitor screen and a printer. And it comes in boxes, and that's the way it shipped. And if we wanted to buy cases, it would cost four hundred dollars apiece. I want to give a little recognition to one of the people that work for me, Dennis Saboda. I came back one day, he had the old case out, and had some stuff laid out, and said, "We can kind of do this, we can kind of do that." And by the time we got done, we have been able to figure out how to alter the case and save eight thousand dollars. So thank you for your help, and your, your brain, and your hard work. We, we appreciate that savings on behalf of the city. Once again, if you have any election questions, seven nine one, thirty-four, thirty-two.
Thank you. Any other announcements? Carol, go ahead.
Don't look at me like that. Be nice. My name's Carol Stewart. I am the past president of the Southwest Dearborn Heights Neighborhood Association. I've been out of business for a little while, because my mother passed away, and I was doing care for her. I was out of the city a lot. I've come back in the last three months since my mom died, and I've been reading Facebook, and I don't understand what is happening to this community. What people wanted when I started this, the association, was ordinance. They wanted their properties taken care of. They wanted people to have good-looking homes. Now, we have ordinance people, and I get on Facebook, and they're calling them stupid and idiots, and I'm sorry, this is not right. That we have these people, they're doing their jobs. Also, when I was, first started, all I heard about was people growing marijuana in the house next door to me. I want this stopped, we've got to do something. Now, the city has a chance to do something about it, get this taken care of, and they're dragging their feet on it. You know, if you have one sterile or two sterile facilities, it's better than fifty-seven hundred houses that are growing pot in their homes, and I can tell you quite a few of them. I'm really ashamed of the residents, I really am. I think you should have more thought for the people that are trying to take care of your city, and trying to get it to look properly. And I have to say that our ordinance director is doing a good job, and his people are not stupid, and they are not idiots, and I think that the ones that are saying this should be reprimanded, and I just did. Thank you.
Thank you for compliment. Anyone else? Anyone else? Go and state your name and the street you live on.
Is it the right time?
Yes.
Okay. Rachel Kapalansky, I live on Gertrude Street. I was here last month, or rather, last, during the last meeting, and brought up the problem of the box solder bug, bugs on the south end of Dearborn Heights. I was asked to submit a letter, I brought that in the following day, gave one copy to the mayor, and one to the council chairperson. I guess I'd like to know if anything has been done, or if anything will be done about this problem, because the problem persists.
We have discovered infestations in the south end and the north end, in all sections of the city. There's been infestations. Mr. Zimmer, because of health considerations, and his family is not here today, I will get a response for you in the next couple of days.
He's got the arborist's schedule, is that a little...
Okay, so the arborists will be, but I, I went to a couple locations in other parts of the city, and, yeah, I'm not sure, but unlike your situation, one group that I saw that the woman asked me to come out and look at, it was in a flower garden area, and, and I, I can't count how many were there. So this thing is spreading very quickly, and we're, we're ready to do battle.
Very good, I appreciate that. Just a comment about the fireworks and the police response. We had an incident in my neighborhood the year when the fireworks were, we were not supposed to do them because it was a hot and dry summer, I can't remember, was that last year? Anyway, a police, the police were called, they did come out, but, and they were showed the address, you know, where this was occurring, but they, they told us that the restriction was not enforceable. In other words, that they couldn't do anything, it wasn't within their authority or their power to stop the fireworks from being... So, so if the police chief is here, maybe you could inform your policeman as to what the policy is, so that in the event that somebody is called, you know, that someone calls the police department on a day when, when fireworks are not supposed to be shot off, that the policeman will know how to deal with, with it properly. Thank you.
Ms. Kapalansky, I did remember hearing that, so the wood pile, where you think maybe the problem originated from, and debris, that's been moved?
Right, right, well, we, we kind of took care of that, but, in the meantime, you know, I had stones all along the two sides of my house, and all of those were removed, pail by pail, and, and then I was looking on the other neighbors, in the other neighbor's yard, and I found, you know, a nest of them there. So we, we weeded that whole area alongside the wall, rather, alongside the fence, so they can be found everywhere, you know, like, it's really hard to control. I, I don't have... I don't have any plants in my yard. I don't have any trees, I don't have any plants, and yet, they're all over my house, you know, every day. Today, I've been, I was killing them today. So, you know, they are a problem, but I'm glad that something's going to be done about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Chief?
Still captain, as of now.
Captain?
You got a promotion. Thanks for the promotion. As to the fireworks, last year, it was, trying to guess from what she's reported, it would have been a fire issue, not a police issue at the time, if it happened the day before, during, or after the holiday. So, that's probably what happened with, in your instance. But we need proper reporting, the address, and we need to see them lighting fireworks, unfortunately, to be enforced. So, we need the proper address, we need to see them doing it, and then we can take some action.
Thank you, Captain.
Thank you, Captain.
And don't hesitate to call.
Thank you, Captain.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Deb Brown England.
Can you leave the mic around?
Yeah, okay. I think our residents need some clarification on the 911 consolidation deal. So, we have a little timeline that I want to throw together, and I'll try to be as quick as possible. On April 18th, the mayor presented a letter to the council requesting them to sign the letter of intent with Dearborn for the combined dispatch. In the letter, the mayor stated that he and Mayor O'Reilly had started negotiations on this two years prior, and he was excited that it had finally come to fruition. The mayor said in the letter that he recommended that the city council adopt a resolution signifying an interest to contract with Dearborn for 911 emergency dispatch services. On the 19th, on June 19th of last year, the administration attempted to shut down an open meeting to give the residents information in regards to 911 dispatch. Thankfully, that was not successful, and the meeting was held. July 19th of 2016, the day, this is the day that the pitch people came from Dearborn to try to sell all the residents on the 911 consolidation. At this time, we had approximately 11 dispatchers, and today, we're down to approximately four. And this is due to the uncertainty of the consolidation. Now, we have to use significant overtime dollars for the police to now answer the phones. July 26th, 2016, at a city council meeting, the mayor reiterated that him and Mayor O'Reilly discussed the 911 consolidation on his TV program approximately two, it's been working for two years. January 4th, an email was sent out to the members of city council stating that on December 28th, Mr. Miyaki received a draft version of the agreement between Dearborn and Dearborn Heights. And the mayor wrote that he had received the same email, January 2nd was reviewing it. Now come January 2014th, when the mayor was questioned about that, the mayor was asked about the 911 contract, and he said, that he saw Mayor O'Reilly, and he said he would have a document sent to him, and more likely, a meeting. The mayor then said that he was not contacted, and he didn't have anything. So, now there is no contract despite the January 4th emails saying to the contrary. So, there was a contract.
Richard, tell us the...
On April 14th, there was supposed to be an open meeting, which never occurred because Dearborn canceled it. Since now it's June, and we're in election season. The mayor stated during candidate forums that we are not moving forward, nor would I suggest moving forward with the study. It has proven not to be economically feasible. I don't see this as a possibility. When did we receive a contract to know that it wasn't economically feasible anymore? So, all of a sudden, now it's election season, and this is no longer economically feasible, we are told we would get to see the contract. On one hand, the mayor tells us the council, there's a draft version, which they never saw, and then the same month, the mayor says there's no contract. First, you say you support the consolidation, and then you say you don't support it. Is this just a stall tactic until after the election? And it seems like the administration is making a serious, actual political issue.
Mr. Chairman? Yes.
I want to respond to that, because that is totally inaccurate. Let's get the facts. The original discussion between Mayor O'Reilly and I was a consolidation was to take place in Dearborn Heights. Dearborn Heights was to be the consolidation, and all the dispatching was to be done in the city of Dearborn Heights, and that's a fact. Dearborn then came and said there is, we can get a grant from the state of Michigan that the governor gives out to study a combined joint dispatch. In that particular process, the Dearborn people convinced Mayor O'Reilly that they ought to take control of it and not have Dearborn Heights do the consolidation. That's where it took a major tangent. And at that point, the cost ballooned exorbitantly. I do not have a copy of contract, and we would, and as I indicated, we're taking steps, and have been taking steps, we've been negotiating, and in fact, the next meeting, you will see on the agenda, and we have indicated to all the council, a continuation of Dearborn Heights dispatch. And constantly, people are saying, "Well, you're in, you're contracting it out." I am not contracted. I don't have the power to contract it out. It'd have to go to the council. But just like Dearborn Heights got a grant and studied taking over the fire department of Garden City, you're gonna, the state offers these grants, and it only behooves, anybody who would not study a particular suggestion is a fool, and you learn things as you go through those studies. I don't see the, and I have indicated this, I do not see a dispatching, a joint dispatching with Dearborn at the Dearborn Center. I can't make that any clearer. And I've said it 100 times, but you keep distorting my comments.
At what point was there a price discrepancy?
I think you already had your two minutes. I had my two minutes, let's move on.
Yes. So, I would suggest to the council members, I'll give you two seconds, suggest to the council members that since we are no longer in negotiations, and no longer, it is no longer feasible, and the mayor does not want it, that the rest of the residents don't want it, that we now send a letter of withdrawal for our letter of intent, formally withdrawing from any further negotiations with them, so that they are where we're going to hire our own dispatchers, we don't need them.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Please stand up and say your name, the street you live on.
Ali Almuna. Live on Nightingale, I'm running for city council.
No campaign. Go ahead.
My two comments is that there's a timeframe for the garbage truck to pick up the cans, because we got ticked it last month, because it seems like it takes a while for them to pick up their cans, and then we have to keep our vehicles on the driveway for a long time, because my kids, they have to go back and forth, and then it's some kind of commusing. What time, is there a timeframe for them to pick it up? My second comment, it's about the fire, fireworks, and incidents last year. I got my garage burned down on the 4th of July of last year, and I haven't heard anything from the city, from the, from the police department about that incident, and I have reports. Is there anything the city can do for the reimbursement? Because my insurance does not cover the garage.
So, to your first question...
Is there a timeframe for the garbage truck to pick up the cans?
So, you mean for the cars not to be on the street?
Exactly.
7:00 to 7:00.
7:00 to 7:00.
Garbage cans be picked up at 7:00 PM?
That's my contract for the trash haulers, 7:00 to 7:00.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman? If I may just...
My name is Bill Bright. I live on Arnold Street.
Hang on, sir. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
If I may just comment with respect to something. Again, state law prohibits the use of city equipment and so on and so forth for purposes of electioneering. It's part of the reason why the public comment procedures say that you cannot end up doing anything that has to do with electioneering. People should not make any comments about the fact that they're running for office or things along those lines, and that's, otherwise, we potentially violate state law with respect to providing essentially a form at the cost of the taxpayers.
Thank you. We'll remember that. Everybody remember that in their comments. Go ahead.
Okay.
State your name and the...
My name is Bill Bright. I live on Arnold Street. I had a couple of questions. This concerns the Warren Valley Golf Course purchase. My first question is, and I haven't heard it, so I'm wondering if there is an answer to this, how is it going to be paid for if you purchase it?
Do you want me to respond to that?
Well, yeah, direct your comments to me.
I'm sorry. How is a golf course, if we purchase it, how is it going to be paid?
Yeah, we have, we have $5.4 million in our fund balance, and the purchase price of 1.8 million plus some related expenses for due diligence and other, and that's where we propose the money come from.
So, it's the general fund?
The surplus of the general fund.
Surplus. You know, I have a little bit of a hard time with that, because if the city can't afford to have their employees working five days a week, but they can turn, they can turn around and spend 1.8 million of a surplus, I, I, I don't see how that adds up.
Well, the one thing you need to understand is, the four-day work week is per a union agreement that was done when the last recession hit, and over 25% of the city's income disappeared. So, it takes an agreement with the union to go back to the five days, which we're in the process of doing.
Okay. So, down the road, probably back to five days.
Yeah, I hope that in the next, you know, I, union contracts, I hesitate to give a deadline, but we have been discussing, and it's, on behalf of all of us elected officials, I told the union I wanted to get a dollar amount to go back to the five days.
Okay. If you purchase the golf course, you're talking about keeping it a golf course, the way I'm understanding.
Absolutely. That's my...
That's what the intent. Now, I don't know all the facts and figures either on this, you know, but I've heard the golf course loses from 300, no, the expenses for running the golf course is between 600,000 and 800,000. They don't make any, Warren Valley runs a deficit running the golf course, or they make 10,000. I'm told that you're looking, the city's looking at turning, or having it contracted out, having somebody come in and run the golf course. I don't know what business would come in knowing they're going to be paying out 800, 800,000, and earn 10,000.
I don't know who told you 800,000.
Well, that was thrown around at one time.
Well, the internal audits does not, that was last done by Wayne County Internal Audit, did not, it showed a very close break even, if not a profit, from both the golf course and the banquet center. You are absolutely correct. We don't have the expertise, and what we talked about is getting, and that's why we're going through our due diligence right now. So, we're trying to determine through golf experts and other banquet center experts whether or not that thing can be run profitably or not. So, the purchase is not complete, we're surveying the land, we're looking, in fact, I've got, I'm in the process of auditing the books, so to speak, and getting assistance through our auditors, Plant Moran, and we will turn all that information to all of us, and we'll look at it before we sign on the dotted line.
Mr. Bright, remember, so, we all would hope that Wayne County would continue to operate it as a public golf course. They've said they're not. So, the alternative is to have it be developed, possibly, or for the city to buy it, and so we control our own destiny. So, but we're not at the point yet where we've made any purchase.
Will our destiny be bailing out a white elephant? If the golf course doesn't...
But you have to look at the other alternative. If it developed, it was made very clear to us that we're responsible for all the water and sewer, especially the sewer. We, who knows, we could be talking 50 million to 100 million dollars. We don't want to replicate what happened, unfortunately, to our fellow residents in the south end, in which a development went in, and then all along the creek, and then people's homes and basements flood on a continuous basis. And now, we find out through the Army Corps of Engineers, it'll take 350 million dollars to fix that. So, we've got to be cognizant of that fact also. The best of all worlds would have been the county continuing to operate that as a golf course, but they made it very clear that they were not going to do that. They were in the process of selling it. So, you have to look at the alternatives also, and that all has to be weighed.
Golf course fails, would you let it go to seed?
I still think...
Because that would be the only other option.
Well, I still think that we need to have our due diligence performed before we even, we even look at that. I personally believe that this is a great buy for the city. As you know, when you get somebody to manage a business, that business is going to perform based on that manager's ability to perform it. With Plant Moran and the outreach they have to other cities and municipalities that have golf courses, and some of the private entities that manage golf courses out there, are all going to be extended, this RFP. And there's money in this golf course. There's money in that property. I don't think you should jump to conclusions right now. Let this due diligence take place, and let's play it out and see where we land.
Mr. Chair? One other thing, hold on, sir. Go ahead, Councilman Muske.
You know, a business is only going to be as good with the tools that they have. I'm not 100% convinced that the county gave this management company everything they needed to succeed. I mean, you know, you see this in business, even, even large corporations where I worked, if they didn't give me the tools to do my job proficiently, you can't do it, and then you're set up to fail. So, you know, I believe that we can give them the tools to succeed better than what they've been receiving in the last 10, 15 years.
You can wrap up, you, three minutes almost up.
Okay. If it's purchased, really, you have two options. Leave it a golf, make it a golf course, or let it grow, because you're not going to build one. So, that's, you know, 1.8 million for those two options. It could work out, but if it doesn't, that was, you know, what happens to the money. One last real quick thing. We were talking about due diligence. I think it was stated that part of that was surveying the land, where it would cost 80,000 to 100,000, or something like that, doing a survey, and if that's sort of correct. When does that fall into due diligence? When would you, I guess what I'm trying to say is, you have due diligence, and you go, you know, you're saying all along that, hey, six weeks from now, a month from now, six months from now, we might not buy this, might change our minds. Well, if you've spent 100,000 on surveying the land, doing whatever to it, a big expense like that, and then you change your mind, say, "We're not going to do it," where does some of this due diligence fit in the process?
Because if we're making a purchase like that, we have to make sure and know what we're getting, but you've had your three minutes. Mayor, go ahead, do you want to say something?
All right.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, everybody. I hope, Mr. Chairman, you can be generous enough, maybe, to let me go over the three minutes by one minute, at the most. My name is Zohair Abdalha, 354 Rosemary. I did read the contract between the Transitional Realty LLC and Taylor City concerning the rehabilitation of those homes which they are foreclosed on. And they did put together a contract for residential only, but I found out among 153 properties they sold to this company, some of them were commercial. And one of the property was purchased in 2004 for 500,000 dollars. It was sold to Transitional Realty LLC for 10 bucks. I did read this con, this contract, and I did go to court with a friend of mine who sued the city for that. I hope we give Mr. Miyaki the time, so he can put all the terms and conditions, so our city does not sell anything below the price which is paid to the county for obtaining those properties. Second, we separate the commercial properties, how we treat them, from the residential properties. Third, we have to make sure that whoever buy them is going to do something with them, not just to take them, like, in this case, the guy wanted to rent it to the person who lost it in Taylor for 900 dollars a month. He didn't do anything to it, any development. Then he wrote in the contract, he can sell it to him at 250,000 dollars option in one year. I hope our city, you know, is...
Mr. Abdalha?
Yes.
Was that the contractor that had the exclusive right to buy the property?
Yes, the Transitional Realty LLC. That's who I mean.
Okay.
So, I just want our city to be very... So, I just want our city to be very careful with what we do with these properties, so we can get them on the payroll, I mean, on the tax roll immediately. And we make sure that they, they obtain CFO immediately. And if they are rental, we make sure that I registered as rental properties, not, you know, to go under the carpet and they, they rent them quietly in the night. This about that subject. The second subject, Mr. Mayor, you have mentioned, the mayor mentioned that we have 500 or 5 and 1/2 million dollars surplus. If you be kind enough, where this surplus came from, and why we have to borrow 1.2 million dollars last meeting internally to make the payroll, and why we had to borrow 2 million dollars to pay for the garbage cans? Where this money came from? Is it a grant for a specific thing restricted, or it is money really we have in the budget we can use for anything? If you have 5 and 1/2 million dollars, Mr. Mayor, in the budget surplus, you got my vote.
Well, the city does, but Mayor.
Yeah. You asked me really three different things. One is that the city funds, to some extent, and you touched on a very good point, the rubbish cans in the sanitary is in a restricted account. And so consequently, the money that was there could only be utilized for sanitation-related costs. So, by, when we bid out the contract, and we went to a different company, when Waste Management, although both contracts are very close, so we would have been able to do something similar with either contract. It's the money from that savings that we're able to pay over time for the canisters, the garbage containers.
Okay.
So, that's one thing. We do have 5.5 million dollars surplus as of, probably going to be a little bit higher after June 30th, because our fiscal year ends on June 30th. I have an idea how much it's going to grow, but I just assume wait until it's subject to audit because there's a lot of variables. The difficulty is that cash and accounting are not necessarily the same. So, and you're a businessman. I may go in and buy some jewelry, but you might give me credit. So, maybe you're waiting for 20,000 dollars from me. On your books, you sold it, you, you put in the 20,000, but it's in a receivable. The state of Michigan's very slow on their payments to us. So, in that, what happens is, we collect taxes for the city once a year. So consequently, all this money kind of comes in around August, September, October, and it's got to handle it through the year. The state of Michigan's getting slower and slower on their state shared revenue payments. That's a significant portion. There's other agencies that are slow. So, while we have 5 and 1/2 million, some of it is not cash. So, what happens is, just before we get to the year where we're going to get that big influx of money from property taxes, we start to run our cash down. And so, that's when we're in a situation now where we balance, we borrow from other funds that have the opposite situation, where they have cash. And then as soon as we get the state shared revenue payment, we get the property taxes, we pay those funds off. We also pay them in interest, so it's not fair for a fund, a sanitary fund or a library fund, to incur the borrowing of money and not get interest. So, what John Riley does is he takes the interest rate that we earn on our money, and that is paid to that other fund by the general fund to make them whole. And then we also have, I think Mr. Miyaki writes the agreement, so it's, it's very legalistic in regards to when we borrow the money. But that's the key point. You have 5 and 1/2 million, but cash flow wise, you may not, and it's because of receivables basically here.
My understanding, our budget has only 126,000 dollars surplus as we speak right now, if I, if I am correct, to the, to the closest number.
That, that is true, but you have to also remember that we're in the middle of contract negotiations. So, there's been money set aside for contract negotiations and for a couple other liabilities. I believe that we won't need to utilize all that, and so that there would be a larger general fund. But, yeah, we, we show that this coming year for 2000, starting July 1st to June 30th of 2018, I would expect that we would add more back to the 5.4 million.
I hope, Mr. Mayor, since we're going to expect that much money, and my understanding that to open the city for five days, it will cost around half a million dollars extra. I hope the negotiation, the negotiation will take that into account, and we open five days a week. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Okay.
Anyone else? Please come up and state your name and the street you live on.
Hello. My name is Julia Homayet. I live on Parkway Circle. I'm here to ask the council to, to regulate medical marijuana in the city of Dearborn Heights. I think it would benefit. My opinion is it shouldn't be by schools, any religious mosque, church, chapel, or any of that. I would like them to be out of homes, because a lot of us have childrens, and I would like it to be regulated. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please come up and state your name and the street you live on.
Philip Quickly, Shilerangle, 50346 Van Dyke, Shelby Township, Michigan. I provided you tonight a packet with an alternative ordinance. I know that the city has been diligent in preparing that ordinance, and I have a few comments that are attached to that alternative ordinance, along with a recent court case about regulating home uses, which a court determined to be unconstitutional. The current ordinance as drafted included such a provision, so I don't think you'd want to enact an ordinance that's already been declared in part unconstitutional. With that, I always am available by telephone, mail, and thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Oh, one issue. I, I did hear, I was at the same board meeting yesterday. The applications become available for applicants on December 15th. That's the day that we would first submit them. But in order to plan, we would anticipate needing the ordinance, you know, early October, or else we're going to be limited by, you know, just simply getting our ducks in a row. So, we would hope that an ordinance would be perhaps ready to go around, early October. Thank you.
Anyone else? Please come up and state your name and the street you live on.
Is there, I'm going to, I guess I can ask this through you to our corporate council. Is there a way that we're going to have something by October, do you think?
Well, I think what we need to end up having is another prize study session where in this body ends up giving Mr. Roberts the direction as to how you want to proceed with it. Because right now, it's unclear to me and to him to what degree you want to end up using the pro operation, the dispensaries, or nothing whatsoever.
I, I have to apologize for not being here at the last study session. I've had some personal issues at home. But I'd like to see another study session, if you could do that.
I will set that up.
Please. I'd like to see that come up real quick.
Mr. Chairman?
Councilwoman Clayton.
I just, I want to say I agree. I think we, we see people who support it. There's, you know, there are reasons and different needs and whatnot. But I also know there's other people who have concerns. So, I think both sides need to be represented and should have input. And so, through a study session, open to the public, I would support that. And Sue, please.
Anyone else?
I would just like to know if there were a study session, would be, would it be open to the public?
Yeah, but, and remember, we're talking about the zoning aspect of it, whether use is, is decided at the state level. Anyone else?
I'm sorry.
Move to.
Well, there was a gentleman there earlier.
Support. Support. Good evening, everyone.